Call the Crystal City Council meeting to order. Let's start with roll call, please.
Councilmember Cummings.
Here.
Councilmember Ibo is absent. Councilmember Kamish.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember Onessa Rosen.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Budzyshevsky.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda before us and we have one adjustment for the temporary on sale liquor license that was missed. That's sitting at your DS. Agenda 5.2. With that modification, I'm looking for a motion to pass that agenda. Tracy?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, second?
I'd like to second that.
Thanks, Tajee. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, we do have a couple proclamations today. I'll read those into the record for those proclamations. First one is National Police Week for May 12th to the 18th, 2024. Whereas the week of May 12th to the 18th, 2024 is National Police Week in the United States. Whereas there are over 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Crystal Police Department. Whereas over 56,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in over 17,000 injuries. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, the total of 24,067 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and died in the line of duty, including 305 Minnesota law enforcement officers. Whereas the name of these dedicated police servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Memorial in Washington DC. Whereas 282 new names of fallen heroes, including two officers from Minnesota, are being added to the National Law Enforcement Memorial this spring, including 118 line of duty deaths in 2023 and 164 who have died previous years but whose stories of sacrifice have been lost to history until now. Whereas May 15th is designated Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and the US flag should be flown at half staff. Now therefore, I, Jim Adams, Mayor of the City of Crystal, do hereby recognize and promote May 12th through the 18th, 2024 as National Police Week in the City of Crystal and call upon the people of Crystal to observe this week in honor of the men and the women who served diligently and professionally to keep the residents of the City of Crystal safe. Dated the 7th day of May, 2024. The second proclamation is for Public Works Week, and that's going to be May 19th to the 25th, 2024. Whereas the public infrastructure of the City of Crystal is an integral part of our everyday lives. And whereas the health, safety, comfort of the residents, visitors, businesses greatly depend on the public infrastructure and services. And whereas support from an encouraging understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the enforcement, operation of public infrastructure system and programs, including transportation, building and facilities, park and forestry, water supply and treatment sanitary sewers, and surface water management. And whereas Crystal's Public Works Department is committed to the mission of quality design, construction, operation, and maintenance of the city public infrastructure. And whereas continued community support and resources are essential for the Public Works Department to carry out its mission. Now therefore, I, Jim Adams, Mayor of the City of Crystal, do hereby proclaim May 19th through the 25th, 2024 as Public Works Week in the City of Crystal and recognize everyday commitment made by the Public Works Department to the city's health, safety, comfort, and overall quality of life. Dated the 7th day of May, 2024. That is our proclamations of the day. Next, we do have an appearance. We have our Hennepin County Commissioner Jeff Lundie here to address the public in the council. Please step forward. He'll give us an update for the City of Crystal. Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I don't know if there's a presentation up or... I thought I was gonna give you good news and say I don't have a presentation, but thanks to diligent work of your city manager.
How many pages?
I'm not delivering that good news.
How many pages?
I think it's seven or eight.
Seven, oh, that's so much better than 73.
Yeah. I will try to be entertaining, but yet fast, if I may. So Jeff Lundie, Hennepin County Commissioner, representing Brooklyn Park, Brooklyn Center, Oseo, Crystal New Hope, and Robinsdale. And so just here to kind of give an update, answer some questions, and then, you know, just do everything I can to make sure that what you're... you need that the county is providing. So I think, I'll skip the first slide, so I'm already moving faster. Second slide, I just want to tell you, always tell you what things I'm chairing. So at the county, I tend to be the person who chairs the criminal justice issues. So Law Safety and Justice, which is the equivalent of our Public Safety Committee. I also chair the Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee, which is all the different aspects from police, prosecutors, defenders, judges, corrections, probation, cities, mayors. All, we have about 28 of us. We get together quarterly and talk about systemic issues that we're trying to do. Example would be last summer where the court, corrections, and prosecutors got together so that when kids fled from a police officer, it became an automatic hold. So if, before it was you'd have to add up points, whether you hold a kid in the juvenile detention center. That became an automatic hold because of the... what was happening is the escalating behavior. They get let out, they go right back out. And so what we started to do is interrupt that. So that's an example of when the system kind of comes together, hopefully. Last thing, just working on, I see the blue line. And then also this last year, I chaired a task force for this Minnesota State Legislature on Youth Interventions. And I'll cover these slides.
Sorry.
It's okay, I'll just keep going. I'll probably be faster that way. You know, I'll just talk about youth interventions first is just really looking at issues, the challenges that we face in Minnesota that when kids are determined that they need mental health treatment as part of their accountability. Again, we don't just determine who's accountable, how it's accountable, but when they are going somewhere. I'll just say it this way. If you have Jeff, you have my brother Jeremy, right? We both suffer from some trauma that happened when we were younger. I take a swing at Tajee, I'm sorry, Councilmember. And he doesn't press charges. They find that I need mental health treatment, that I have trauma that was triggered by something in my childhood. And I go into a system called DHS, right? Health Human Services. So our brother takes a swing at your city attorney. City attorney, not quite as forgiving, he presses charges. My brother goes into the correction site, DOC. He starts, same problems, same kids, same issues, same swings, different paths, and they go different directions. And in most states, they've taken, put those paths together to say that the fact my brother and I took a swing at somebody, we did the same thing, but I didn't have charges pressed against me. Now in Minnesota, we have another thing, which is the fact that maybe later on, I'm getting treatment, I'm doing better, but I take a swing at Teresa, Councilmember Kaiser. She presses charges. I get moved out of my, where I'm at, into the corrections. So this kind of bouncing back and forth has kids going there. And so what happens, what the interventions, task force looked at was all those different aspects. And many things, like, you know, we talk about, you've heard people say, "We don't have a place to put these people." The fact is, in Minnesota, a third of the beds in the state that should be available for mental health treatment are not staffed. And so it's not, we don't have places, we don't have the staff to have them. And so kids languish, kids go places. We heard testimony from a girl who had lived experience. She, as she said, "I didn't feel accountability until I got sent away." So that's a problem. But when she started to make progress, the system is like an escalator, moves them through the system, drops them off. So maybe if Mayor Adams is my mentor and I'm making good progress, oop, six months is up, I move to Councilmember Cummings, right? And so now I've got to start all over. And so the system's very disjointed and it doesn't work well. So here's the bad news. 1998, they had a similar task force that came back with a pretty close to the same report we delivered. And you can figure, if we, 25 years later, were doing the same thing, that meant the state didn't change things. So it's our hope to do that, because we know if we can do a better job and when kids have accountability delivered, that they don't get back out and go right back, the same thing. Because if my brother and I, that trauma is not fixed and we get released, what's the odds I'm gonna go out and take another swing at somebody? Pretty high, because I haven't fixed anything, and neither have us. So that's what the goal was, was to look at that. There's lots of things that we need as a state to do, and only the state legislature can enact those. Not the cities, not the counties, it is legislature. So I heard questions. You guys are getting on my slides live. I texted a few of you and some of you that were blessed, that I don't have your cellphone, count your blessings. Sorry, Councilmember, Mayor Adams, Councilmember. That, Hennepin County, we did something, in 2021, we did violence prevention grants, which were community-based grants. We used our money to put $5 million out on the street to help fund violence prevention, then went to five groups. It was very targeted, it was after, you know, the unrest. You had the, all the shutdowns, you had people, I think lots of things that were really affecting people. And you also had George Floyd being killed, and I think that caused a lot of people to question lots of things. And so we put $5 million on the street, we got it out there fast. That's 2021. 2022, the county created a department called Safe Communities to look horizontally across the county. Every day, the county is working with 3,500 youth. Could be food support, rental support, it could be mental health, it could be corrections. Actually, 99% of the kids in our county are not on the news. Everybody thinks they see kids, they see people in the news, that's not the case. So we created that department to look horizontally. 2022, we also created something called Anti-Hate Initiative, which is to look at hate. And I think right now, you can look at some of our campuses and you can feel that, where people are saying a lot of things that make people feel unsafe. 2023, the county took those violence prevention grants. Now we fund them with county taxes, which I'm sure as a city, you guys love to spend other people's money, preferred. We moved from spending other people's money to spending county money. And so that meant even more of a commitment, because it's always easier. This time, instead of having five groups, we did, I think it was 46 to 48 groups got money all across the county. And then the other 50 that didn't get money, we kept in a cohort. So we didn't just say, "Sorry, you don't get any money." We actually are keeping, working with them, try to help them grow as nonprofits, churches, whatever they are. So we've got a roster of close to 100 organizations that are really focused on community-led safety and youth. So that's 2023. 2024, and this is the long answer to Councilmember Budzyshevsky's comment. We started the Safe Community Summit, which will be in May 16th through the 18th. Everybody here is invited, City of Crystal, police staff, county, city staff, and electeds. It'll be at the Brooklyn Park Marriott, Minneapolis Marriott Northwest, I guess technically. It'll be 16th through the 18th, 16th and 17th. Our two days of sessions really geared toward helping pull us together. Every city and school district in the counties has been invited. I think we've hit the halfway point as to who's coming. And I know as suburban agencies, you guys have other jobs. And so we know people that will get there as best they can. So I've got some text messages, I'll send some emails. Where if you're like, "I can go for an afternoon," sign up. If you can go to one session, sign up. Day one is a little heavier on the county, about what we're trying to do. Day two is a partnership with a group called Cities United, so citiesunited.org. And I'll get your presentations, you guys have that. But if you want to check it out, they were the thing that Brooklyn Park used when I was mayor to lower youth calls for service by 60%. We focused quite heavily on the work. And what they do is they allow a city to do a SWOT, right? Strength, weakness, opportunity, threat, self-analysis. Take that, compare that to national best practices across, I think it's 14 or 16 categories, and allow you to come up with, they call roadmap or plan. Because I often hear people say, "I want to do something, I don't know where to start. I need money." I tell you what, money is not, it's the last thing that comes. You have a plan, money, in my book, has always followed good plans. And so this allows a city to come up with your plan. It's not the county's plan. It can be Crystal's, it can be Brooklyn Park. Whatever a city wants to do it, it's your plan, your community, your efforts, and everything is geared toward that. And so this is free of, free. I would encourage you, if you have interest, I know a couple of you have signed up, and you can make it, even if it's for a little bit. If you're not sure if you can make it, please sign up, because you'll get follow-up information. But the goal, you know, last summer, I went to 23 public safety meetings across the county, because I'm a button for punishment, right? Lots of finger pointing, lots of complaining, lots of unhappiness, right? And I cannot think of a single thing, out of all those meetings, that came out of any of those meetings, because we're all focused on complaining. All of us, myself included, right? And so this summer, we're trying to set the stage about what can we do together? We can do it better if we do it together. So the summit, if you, Crystal staff, police, can come and start to hear ideas. The second day, that Friday, if you only have one day, you can go, we'll have national speakers coming in to talk about things that they've done. You're gonna hear some cities talk about how they've failed in every possible way to do things, till they found the right way. And the idea is really to say that if you're not sure, no one else is, and to really kind of find those tools. And so that organization is available free of charge. The last day is, there's a boot camp, which is if the city, Crystal, or whatever city says, "We want to go into this planning part." There'll be a boot camp that we're paying for the technical assistance to be available for the city to start that plan. And again, up to you guys. I mean, you can come get ideas. You can come and just say, "Hey, we're gonna browse a little bit and just look." But for the most part, it's okay. The last thing I'll say, so, no need for the presentation. So, you know, this, this summer, we're leaning into municipal consent. So for every city here, you know, Crystal, Brooklyn Park, Robinsdale, Minneapolis, all have the opportunity to give or not give municipal consent, or in some cases, say, "We're not gonna give an answer, but these are conditions." I would expect in August timeframe, there'll be, the Met Council and the Hennepin County have to kick it off by announcing the municipal consent process. Hennepin County has to give municipal consent, just so you know, so we go through the same process. There'll be, when that moment kicks off, there'll be roughly a 45-day period where cities have to have at least one public hearing. You can have multiple, and that's an opportunity to gather feedback. At the end of that 45-day session, there'll be, within 30 days, there has to be a vote. And that's up to yours on the municipal consent. And so I think you'll see this summer, there'll be a number of driveway meetings that I tend to like to host, where people can get together and ask questions. And people ask direct questions, fun questions, not fun questions. I'll make sure that any in Crystal, that the entire council is aware of it. So if you want to come by, great, if you don't, that's your choice. So we'll make those available as well. And then the last thing, and this is where one of the slides is, and you can see it when I send it out, is if you see a map, it's actually, I don't know if it's a good map, because what, the message is bad, was if you see a heat map of all the transit, you'll see the circle, which is my district, that has one heat map. It's off the circle, it's in Brooklyn Center. It's empty, pretty much, that's transit in our district. If you took that circle and you put over people in poverty, you'd find out they'd line up pretty dang, pretty good. Then if you had another one, which is demographics, lines up pretty good as well. You'd almost say if one was sarcastic like me, that it sure looks like it was planned. I don't have transit, I have all the people who are poor, and I have the people who, different demographics than historically Minnesota. And so you look at that, and you really see, this is why the county board believes light rail is one of those solutions. Is it the solution or the only solution? No. But from an aspect of, when you see that map, and you'll see it, the circle in there, it drives a lot of things. And so I will make myself available throughout the summer, answer questions. I will never tell you how to vote. I would just provide every piece of information I can, and I know, obviously, take feedback on things that you want to see. If it comes, I need this. And so I'll do that absolute best to receive that. And so with that, I'll stop. No slides, so I don't know if that's good or bad, as fast as I could do it, so.
Commissioner Scruton, the presentation that you had just sent, is that the one?
Yep. Hopefully I didn't send Robinsdale, so. So that's all I had, and I'm available, up to your review.
All right, questions for Jeff before we let him go?
I think he answered mine, because I was talking about the summit, the Safe Community Summit that's gonna take place on the May 16th and 17th. So, yeah, I plan on being there on the 17th, so. I signed up today, but yeah, I'm looking forward to see what that's all about, participating, so.
Yeah, and something, we have opened it up a little bit as we got closer. So if you have community members, maybe it's a key nonprofit or a church that you think would be good in that situation, forward them the link. They can sign up. We have over, actually, 300 spots plus 200 overflow, so we have room by design. And there's a virtual option too, you just won't be able to see breakout sessions, so. But love to have you, and if you can only get there for one event, at least, you know, please sign up. I'll put it that way.
Anyone else?
What's happening with the closure of Herc?
It closed down last week. Right now, is, I would say of all councilmembers, Councilmember Kaiser would know the first. So right now, that plan that we laid out when I was here before, we talked about all the steps that needed to be done. And so right now, we're waiting for the legislature to start doing their work, which is there are some things that they have to do. So Herc is not gonna get shut down until we have an ability to do a lot of things, and we need the legislature to act. So we've talked about producer responsible packaging, we've talked about other things. So as of right now, until we get the legislature to act on that, and, you know, there was score funding, there was manufacturers' responsibilities for packaging. As to your question, we're continuing to work forward on that.
Okay.
I do think, and we had this conversation, there will be a plan developed this summer to talk about organics recycling. I know you guys have talked about it. But education, helping people be more aware, rather than just discovering in their bill that they're getting charged.
Thank you.
All right, I got some comments on light rail. Obviously, you have a pretty good idea of how I feel about a lot of that. You know, we came into this new alignment with an extreme amount of, or lack of trust. And through this process of the last year and a half, or however long it's been since we've got the new alignment, or towards that, the trust hasn't been restored. A lot of the things we've asked for have been ignored, or cursory, "Okay, here you go," without the proper background. So we've been responding with letters to the project office. I think you've seen the letters too. Not getting responses. When it comes to municipal consent, we've got a window about this much. Maybe it's a month, maybe it's two, I'm not sure. But there's a lot of information that the project office has said, "Well, you need to be engaged." And then when we engage, they say, "No, not till June," you know? And it's just like, okay, which way is it? So the frustration is getting high in, in the questions I've asked at the CMC meeting, which of course you were at, just don't get answered. They just, they just don't get answered. So we're gonna get those answers supposedly. And what I'm referring to are the metrics of, you know, the needs for transit. You remember that meeting?
Yep.
We're not gonna get those till June, end of Junis, I think, is what it is. And to be able to respond to that, plus all the things that we've asked Hennepin County with road turnbacks and all the things to make things work around that. We're just in a place where it's becoming frustrating. We're going to CMC meeting, and now it's gonna be the city's opportunity to say what our point of views are. Well, we've done that, we've sent the letters, we've sent the responses, and now we're going to do that in public. I would really love to see Hennepin County talk a little bit more specifically about what their concerns are. Because the way it's setting up is the cities, come Thursday, are gonna be, you know, carrying all the weight. It's been a one-size-fits-all for every single city. I think we have an agreement. It was amazing to see the agreement between the Blue Line Coalition, the Anti-Displacement Group, Minneapolis, and us. And that agreement was the lack of trust. That didn't feel good. And that's where we are going. And as we get there, in just a few months, we're gonna resolve all of that in a few months. I'm not sure how that's gonna happen. So I want you to know that I have real big concerns of... So I want you to know that I have real big concerns of getting that done by August. I, I, you know, other people have asked for extensions, I don't have faith that it's going to be accomplished. So do what you can to step up in terms of responsiveness, responding to our letters, some of the things you have come through and had, you know, the low-hanging fruit has been accomplished, I think, already, but there's an awful lot that doesn't fit a transit program. And you also know my biggest frustration, we don't have transit in Crystal, and you talked about that layover, that map layover, we're no different. And, and if the metric is such that we're looking for people who are dependent on transit inside of Crystal, we're not going to find them, because they don't move here because there is no transit.
Yep.
So I'm going to be very curious to see what those metrics are, and if they're going to, if they're going to be more prone towards a development project, or more towards a transit prob, prob, product. We have a highway, we can put a bus on it. It doesn't have to be BRT, it doesn't have to be light rail, it just needs to be transit. And that can be done with a, a bus and a driver, we don't need to designate a lane, traffic is flowing, you know, are we going to get serious about transit or not? So those are my concerns, those are the things that I, I feel like are not being heard. Unfortunately, you'll have to hear it again Thursday, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just.
Sure.
That, absolutely, I'll just accept that. I think the one thing that I've talked to this city about is just creating a list, and start knocking it off, and then if there's things that you're saying, here's, here's eleven things, and there, it might grow, as people are like, hey, I've got one to add, we add it, and we just keep, we did that when I did IT projects, it was just knock out the things, put it down in full view, so that everybody has that, and some answers might be a no, right? And that's fine, a no is a, I always think is sometimes the best answer, because then you move on, or you don't move on, and so I think that we can start to knock those out. And I think, I, we'll do this, I'll, I'll work with staff to kind of come up with that, that thing that you get a view, all, all of you, that it's in full view, I don't, it can be in the public view, it doesn't matter to me to really lay those out, and if there's other things identified, but I think that, how do you get trust? It's by knocking out small steps, so I will commit to you to walk in through that process.
All right, thank you. Thanks for taking the time to come see us, to.
Thank you.
To share with that, I know, I know you go to, you've got a lot on your plate, so thank you for your work.
Thank you, thank you for your time, and if anybody has questions about the safe communities, or if you have other people that might be interested in your community, always text me, I've got that link that I forward, you can forward it on to others, and so thank you for your time.
All right, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is our consent agenda, the council will consider the following items, which are non-controversial in nature, we'll do that in a single motion. First item is the approval of the minutes from the following meetings, it's the City Council Work Session on April eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, it's also the council meeting on April sixteenth, and the work session from that same date. Approval of the list of license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council, that list is on file in her office, and then adoption of a resolution accepting donations, and adoption of a resolution. Approving the participation of Hennepin County Housing and Redevelopment Authority in the Affordable Housing Project. Looking for a motion on that, Najee?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, looking for a second? Go ahead, David.
I will second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Open forum, all right. So just a reminder to the public, open forum is a time where you can address the council, we allow three minutes for each topic, ten minutes, or I'm sorry, each person, ten minutes for each topic, and it's just an opportunity to kind of express what you want to express. Public hears you, council hears you, staff hears you, so that's what this is about. So first person is John Lindholm, please step forward to the podium there, state your name, address, make sure that you adjust the mic if need be, if you're.
It looks good, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, John Lindholm, eight one one seven thirty-second Avenue North, it's in the Winnetka Hills area.
Yes.
I just have a concern with my sump pump box that the city put out in the nineties when they did curb and gutter everywhere, this started back in September, I noticed the lid was starting to come off, it's below grade, once I took the lid off it, I noticed the box was crushing, I started cutting the roots out around it, there's a tree five feet from it, I finally said, well, what should I do? I called the city, they decided Public Works was responsible, well, this has been going on since September, and I still got nothing accomplished. I know Ben is the person I've been in contact with, with Public Works, and he started out having to do his manager's work, and his work, or somebody left right about then. He did finally come out and take pictures of it, what I really was asking for was just an extension for it, so I could bring it up to grade and put a cover back on it, and I've just been getting the runaround. I, I talked to him, he promises to, you know, to order something, he says he orders something, then he says, then two months go by, I call him again, what's going on? Well, they don't have that, but I found another one, two months goes by, I call him again, well, I found a new pla, two weeks, well, this has been two months. So I just, help me, I, I don't know what to do, I do have photos of it, but I mean, it's just, it's a mess, and I don't, he didn't have an answer for me as to who put the tree there, I didn't, I've been there twenty-two years, but it's all within that twelve foot.
So that project was done before you bought?
Yes.
Just before, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably the homeowner at that time, okay.
So I just need help on how am I going to get this, you know?
Okay, I, you know, I think what we'll do is we'll put you on the constituent issue update, and then we'll make sure that the council gets updated as to what the status is of your project.
Okay.
Adam will make sure that.
I'll follow up on it.
That will follow up, we've got your contact.
You don't need photos or anything, and I have photos on, on digital if I need to email that to anybody.
Okay, I, I, I'll, I'll, we have your contact information.
Yep.
So we'll, I'll speak with Ben tomorrow.
Okay, all right, I appreciate it.
All right.
All right, thanks for hearing me out.
Yeah, thanks for coming in, appreciate it. Yeah. There you go. Anybody else wishing to speak during open forum? Seeing no one approach, we will close open forum, and move on to the regular agenda. The regular agenda starts with disbursements of twenty-five thousand dollars or greater. It's another list, so here we go, I'll read those into the record. Waste Management, HRG for March, Crystal Recycling, twenty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars. City of Brooklyn Park for two thousand twenty-three recycling administrative fees, eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Golden Valley Joint Water Commission for March water charges, one hundred and fifty, excuse me, one hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Met Council for Wastewater Services for May, one hundred and forty-three thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. Tri-State Bobcat Inc. for Tool Cat and Attachments, ninety-three thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Waste Management for March, Brooklyn Center and New Hope Recycling, fifty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. West Metro Fire Rescue District for April contributions to the West Metro Fire Rescue District, one hundred and thirty-six thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars. Golden Valley Joint Water Commission for the February billing, billing correction, fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. IRS electronic payments for the federal and FICA withholding taxes for four twelve twenty-four for paid, that's the pay date, sixty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Minnesota Pera for the employees' city required contributions for the same pay date, seventy-two thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars. Total disbursements of twenty-five thousand dollars or greater is eighty-one, or eight hundred and eighty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. Question from the council on any of these items? Go ahead, Tracy.
Just curious on the, all the recycling, like, what's the, the city of Brooklyn Park, we have the, and then we have the cities of Brooklyn Center and New Hope, like, what, what is that?
The, so under the HRG, Brooklyn Center, New Hope, and Crystal are the three communities that are, are the, the members of the HRG. The city of Brooklyn Park, the staff member, he's actually a employee at the city of Brooklyn Park, is the director of the HRG, and so that we pay their administrative fee to the city of Brooklyn Park directly. The city also pays for the Brooklyn Center, New Hope recycling charges, and then we, we invoice them, so we get.
We get it back, okay.
Their portion. Is that clarified?
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? All right, looking for a motion. Go ahead, Therese.
I'll make a motion to approve his expenditures over twenty-five thousand.
All right, looking for a second, Tracy?
I will second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. Next item is, the council will consider civil penalties in violation of a liquor license regulations by Cleaver Liquor, doing businesses, Clever Liquor, liquor located at fifty-one twenty, fifty-sixth Avenue North. We will start with our city clerk, Chrissy Series, to address the council on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, mayor and council. Actually, the next five agenda items are related to liquor license violations. These businesses did not pass the alcohol compliance checks that were conducted by the police department in the fall of two thousand twenty-three. The first of which is Clever Liquor, located at fifty-one twenty, fifty-sixth Avenue North. The employee of the business has pleaded guilty in court to the offense, notice of the violation, and tonight's meeting was sent to the licensee on April twenty-sixth. This is considered a second violation for this licensee as it occurred within twenty-four months of the first violation. However, it appears Mr. Sanchez, the owner of the business, is here tonight to address the council.
I'm here, I'm sorry.
Yes. To, to address the council. Consistent with the civil penalty scheduled adopted by the council, staff recommends a fifteen hundred dollar fine and three-day license suspension.
All right, are there any questions from the council for Chrissy on this item? Okay, seeing none.
Question, when was the first violation?
Last year.
Councilmember Kaiser, the violation date was December eighth of twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay. That's right. Go ahead.
Thank you. On the first violation, do you know, was it full penalties that they were charged? Or what, what were they cited by the city?
Councilmember Kamish, my records show that it was a seven hundred and fifty dollar fine and no license suspension.
Thank you.
All right. All right, now you may step forward to the podium, please give us your name, and.
Hello, my name is Clever, I don't know, I just want to make the comment, you know, I work with this store.
Okay, hold on a second, just real quickly, you have, you have the opportunity to have a hearing, we're wondering if you're going to waive that in, in the, the decision here, or?
No, I mean, we're guilty, so I'm not, I'm not.
Okay, so, so no here, all right, go ahead, you have comments?
No, the only comment, there was, it was my son who was calling for like two hours the day, but he did take the class for the checking IDs with the city of Crystal, and I don't know what happened, he was a little busy that day, I'm not making excuses, but it's happened, what happened, yeah.
Okay. That was your, did you say your son?
No, my son, my son works with me.
Okay, all right. Yeah, go ahead.
Who did the first liquor violation?
It was a employee that, a long time ago, was a.
Okay.
Yeah, don't work with us tomorrow.
Wow, okay, any, any questions? All right. So, go ahead.
Have you changed your practices at all, so that this doesn't happen again? Or how are you addressing this?
Well, we did take the classes and everything, you know, he did, I, I don't want to, like I said, I don't want to make an excuse, I think it was the pressure that he was working by himself, and then the moment, it was, it was a little busy, and, and I think that's what it was, you know, he, he paid the fine too, with, with, in the court and everything. It's just not an excuse, but it was very much the pressure of the, the busy time it was in the moment, even we talked with the police officer and everything, and they were there, you know, when that happened, and, and they said, yeah, I was a little busy, that was, I think it was a comment or something in the, in the, with, from the police officer, saying, it was a little busy, but that's the only excuse.
So have other members of your staff taken the class too?
No, no, nobody, I mean, I, I said that before too, I did, I worked in for like ten years, so I did take some classes with my previous jobs I used to work with, so I know how to handle that stuff.
Okay.
It was just my son, my son, he is nineteen, nineteen years old, he helped me out, you know. I think it was the pressure, he didn't, that's, and that one.
Okay.
Do you have, do you have any technology that's helping your cashiers?
It, it is, we're looking, we look for it, but I, I work over there myself, and I feel really confident, and I, I won't do that, you know, and, and it's kind of very spending, and it's kind of hard to be in the business right now with, you know, with all the competition around, you know, and it's, I, I work myself to be able to keep it open for business.
I understand. All right.
I have, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
It says here in the report that your son looked at the ID, and, and then proceeded to go ahead with the sale, so my understanding is that there's a difference in the ID between someone who's underage and someone who's of age, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, and so, how long has your son been working in your store?
He works in, around, like, a year and a half.
He's been there a year and a half, and he, and you said that you took the, the training through the city here, was he part of that training?
Yes, it was previous to that happen.
The training was previous to when that?
Yes.
To when he started working in the store?
Yes.
Okay, so he was not, he was not, he didn't go through the city's training at that, when you went through the training, is that correct?
No, not when I went, no, he, he did before that happened, it was like three months before that happened.
Okay.
He did that training, yes.
And so, I mean, is, do you have anything in the store to help your employees determine?
Yes, yes, we have the date and that, like a, like a clock, we have the date, and when you're not supposed to sell until that date.
And what about the actual, how the ID looks itself, because it's different, right?
The one we do too is write the counter.
Yeah.
It's writing a counter, like I said, I don't know, it's my son, I can't.
Because you, you can see how close this is, I mean, you know, he should have, he should have seen that this person was underage, and, but he went ahead with the purchase anyway, so pretty much he's, you know, bypassing, I mean, the, the ID part is just more or less.
The, the date, I tried to.
I understand, sir, I understand that you're trying to help them with these visual things too, but, you know, the state has made the IDs so that it's obvious that, you know, this person is not eligible to be purchasing alcohol in this, in your establishment. And so, you know, your son asking for ID and just basically going ahead with the sale is bypassing a very important step in this process.
All right.
And we're asking you to help us with this, that's why.
Absolutely, absolutely. The only comment right there is, there's a lot of people with the ID vertical, and they are already twenty-one with the dates, you know, because they, they have to go to the D and B to get a different ID.
They should be getting a new ID, yes, they should be, you should.
But they don't do it.
Yeah, you should be turning that business away, sir, you know, and that would help you, you know, you would benefit from that, so.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you for your comments. All right, so you have any further questions, council, from staff on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion or discussion.
Or, do you want a motion first, then discussion, or?
Either way, anybody have any discussion?
I feel like we should just, we should discuss first, because I feel like.
Yeah.
It's been in flux about, you know, how we want to do this, so, I can, I'll just start, I feel like, just handing down exactly what's written, I think we should incentivize people to come to the meetings, and when we do that, we can kind of like knock down like a fine or the days in that way, unless there's other circumstances where it's really egregious, or we don't feel like they sufficiently answered our questions, but that's just where I come from, I think knocking a little bit down when people come and talk, and we feel satisfied with what they talk about. So that's just where I come from in this, and I know we have different viewpoints, so it'll be interesting to see where people are at with that.
So what's your proposal?
Well...
You said knock it down, specific amount, or?
I would say $1,000 fine. And I guess we don't have a specific number of days, but it would be, you know, say it's three days, maybe say two, something like that.
So I'll make some comments. Generally, when it comes to a third violation, whether they show up or not, I go maximum. I mean, I've been doing that since, there haven't been a lot of cases, but I've been doing that since I've started here, so 12 years. Usually, I err on the side of, I don't want to close down a business. And I usually, if there's any grace, I give the grace in the area of closure. However, some people would just as soon take the closure as opposed to the fine, you know. Each person may have a different preference in terms of the business. Because the closures can be, you know, can be managed through our city clerk. And there are some better times to be closed than not closed, so.
Does it, is it consecutive days, or is it just three days?
Three days.
Consecutively?
No.
So it can, okay.
Not necessarily. Is that correct?
If I may, councilmember Kamish. Historically, it has been three consecutive days, but on occasion, it has been three, one day for three weeks, or a different arrangement depending on the licensee.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Any other comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think for me, I will personally be more lenient on first violations, and I'm sure you'll see that as we have more of these to discuss. Anything more than that, I take more issue with. And so, and so when it comes to a fine and suspension, I will probably always be in support of the full fine amount, but then would be open to discussing the number of days for license suspension. Because I do not necessarily want to impact the patrons who want to go to this business, you know, go about their day and whatever. The fine is like a direct impact to the owner. And that's why we're trying to help course correct here by administering this, so I will probably be more lenient on the number of days, similar to your point, mayor, of not wanting to impact the business and the patrons in that regard. So that's just like how I think about this. My proposal would maybe be, again, as I said, probably the full fine amount, and then potentially taking one day off of the three-day suspension. But again, I do take issue with anything more than one, you know, a second or third violation, because if we're not figuring it out the first time, it seems like there's some more fundamental issues, so that's where I'm at right now.
All right, any other views want to be shared? John?
Well, I think with the first violations, we have been very lenient in terms of both fine and also with the suspension. And we have people come back, you know, they come back with a second violation and then we, you know, because we were lenient the first time around, we're even, we're lenient with the second violation as well. So personally myself, I mean, in the past decade, we seem to have this whole thing where we kind of like, oh, it's okay, you know, the business, you know, they're sorry, they made a mistake. You know, well, we'll just go easy on them, but the issue here is that there are sales to underage individuals in our city. And the way you change that culture is by sticking to your, to the penalty. And getting, you know, the the business owners who are in partnership with this process with us to make sure that they card and prevent underage purchases within their stores. And not only for liquor, but for tobacco, and again, as we move into the use of THC products. I mean, it's, this is something that we need to be a little more stringent on. And it's got to start here, it starts with us, we're responsible. We're responsible for holding up, you know, our ordinances and making sure that we, if we're going to have liquor sales and tobacco sales and THC sales in our community, that the owners of those industries are following our guidelines to a T. And they should not be here. They, you know, because they're showing up means to me is like, shows me that it's okay, that, yeah, it's okay that, you know, someone gets a pack of cigarettes, even though they're not, you know, old enough to have a pack of cigarettes. It's okay if they, you know, bought, you know, a one-shot fireball, you know, product, you know, you know, it's okay. But you know what, it, you know, what we don't really look at is like, you know, the long-term effects of the youth in our society getting addicted, and that's what we're asking them to help us with in this process. And for me, it's frustrating when I have individuals kind of like go and start, you know, you kind of want to feel sorry for the business owners when really truly, I mean, what we need to feel sorry for is the, is the youth in our society who are finding easy ways to get access, because once they find out that a business owner is selling to underage people, they flock there like there's no tomorrow, you know, and so I want them to to follow the liquor guidelines to a T. We shouldn't have to worry about compliance checks. The compliance check should come back clean every time. We're telling them we're coming, we're telling them we're going to do compliance checks, and they still fail. And that's, that's the part that frustrates me to, you know, to no end. And so I will always, always pick the, you know, the, you know, the full penalty and the full suspension in every case. And I know people don't see where I'm coming from or or can understand how I feel about these things. I mean, and sure, I have a teenager, right? And I, and, but when I think about it, it's like, I, I don't have the opportunity to know what's going on every day in their life, and I don't know if they have access to various areas, but, you know, I mean, you know, help me, help me be, you know, you know, be a better parent and and, you know, I expect these individuals to, to also say like, look, you know, we're not going to take on this kind of risk. And they're, they're going to, they need to change the culture in their business, is what I'm asking them to do. And that's what I'm asking them to do tonight, and I expect you also to support me on that too as well. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Tracy.
I definitely understand where John's coming from, and I mean, with the size of our city, as small as it is, we have a really large number of liquor stores. And our violation, our our penalties are less than neighboring communities, is my understanding. So we're picking up the ones that, that, you know, compliance checks, we're seeing the ones that compliance checks caught, but how many are we not seeing between compliance checks? So with the number of liquor stores we have, selling liquor, and to me, I'm just concerned about the ones that we're not picking up. And if we, like John said, if we set a standard and say, no, this is, this is it, this is not accepted, I feel like they're going to be more, I don't know, more careful about what they're doing, make sure that they've got, you know, you're looking, the state of Minnesota, like, like we said, they, you know, your driver's license is vertical and it says not 21 in big red letters, there's no reason that a violation should occur. Even if you don't have the fancy technology, you, when you're looking at a driver's license, there's so many failsafes to say, this is not a person that's legal. I, I'm with John. I think maximum penalty.
So just, just a comment on our process is, we have discretion. You know, we can make these adjustments, I think, we all know that, that's obvious. And keep in mind, this is a civil action. And there's already been another action done, so we're not the only people doing the action. So there's a, there's a sense of kind of a double whammy when these, when these violations come. And by design, you know, one hits the individual, one hits the business. And there are some, there are some cases where I have done the maximum, I voted for the maximum. Because there were more circumstances, there wasn't, there wasn't space for grace in my mind in that discretion. I think, I think we need to use that, treating somebody who, who has a very bad attitude and will, will badmouth the city of Crystal or the council themselves. And I'm giving them the same treatment as people who come and actually show concern and don't hide from what happened. That doesn't feel good to me. So I will be, I will be going for something a little bit different than the max.
What if grace was already given the first time?
Less grace the second, no grace the third, that's kind of my, that's my thinking order. And obviously, it's going to be just like any other time we do this, we might go through more than one.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I just make a quick comment? Your councilmember asked about the schedule that the council, that the city has on this. Just a quick refresher, some of you weren't on the council back then in 2018 when, when those were set. But the council did do a comparative review. John, and the mayor, you know, you know, there, you looked at several different cities, what their penalties were. And then the, the schedule that the council came up with was, I can't say higher low, but it was after considering, I don't know, considering the other cities.
All right, who wants to do a resolution, anybody? Go ahead, John.
I make a motion that based on the staff report, including the findings contained therein and the other information presented regarding this matter, that a penalty of $1,500 and a three-day license suspension be imposed in this case.
Looking for a second. Got a second, Tracy?
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Roll call, vote please.
Mayor Adams.
Nay.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings.
Nay.
Councilmember Kamish.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Nay.
Councilmember Vanessa Rosen.
Aye.
Motion ties, motion fails.
All right. Go ahead.
I would make a motion that the fine is $1,500, but a two-day suspension.
All right, looking for a second on that? David?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Nay.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Kamish.
Nay.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Vanessa Rosen.
Nay.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Motion ties, motion fails.
Does anyone have a coin?
We've got to vote for something, we... Is there a motion down there?
No, I don't have a motion, just a comment.
You go ahead and make your comment.
Just so folks know where I'm at. And as I said in my initial comments, the second violation piece is what really gets me. I will probably, as I've said, be more lenient on the first violation. But that's why I am supportive of a full, the full kind of suspension and fine. Because if you have to come back within two years for this stuff, that's an issue.
So we've had two failed motions, one is the max, one is just below the max. The direction we're going is down. Those are the only, those are the ones we haven't voted on. Split council.
What, what hasn't gone down? The fine? What, what are you saying?
The next motion is going to be less than what the prior two were. Unless we duplicate the motion again. So the direction is more lenient. I don't know if you realize that. I'll make a motion. Full fine, one-day suspension, looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Kamish.
Nay.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Nay.
Councilmember Vanessa Rosen.
Nay.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Nay.
Motion fails five to, or four to, excuse me.
Is there another motion?
I'll make a motion.
Tracy?
I make a motion that based on the staff report, including the findings contained therein and the other information presented regarding this matter, that a penalty of $1,450 and a suspension license for a period of three days be imposed in this case.
Looking for a second.
I second that motion.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Councilmember Kamish.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Vanessa Rosen.
Nay.
Mayor Adams.
Nay.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings.
Nay.
Motion ties, motion fails.
We're going to have to reschedule this hearing. If we can't get to a vote.
Well, are you, are you just maximum and that's it?
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, I'm not trying to play on the $50 here, I mean, it's more the principle of the thing. And yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm maximum.
Great.
I feel strongly that I don't want to leave this undone tonight.
I agree.
And you're, you're at two days, is that your?
How about if I make a motion, can I make a motion that was already made?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, the fine of $1,500 and a three-day suspension.
All right. Got a second?
I'll second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay?
Nay. Nay.
Roll call.
Councilmember Kamish.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Vanessa Rosen.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Nay.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings.
Nay.
Motion, motion carries, order two.
All right, next item on the agenda, our city clerk will address the council on Family Cafe, right? Two, yep. All right, go ahead, Chrissy.
Thank you again, mayor and council. The next business that did not pass the compliance check was Family Cafe and Diner located at 6236 56th Avenue North. The employee of the business has pleaded guilty in court to the offense. Notice of the violation and tonight's meeting was sent to the licensee on April 26th. This is a first violation for this licensee. Staff recommends a $750 fine and one-day license suspension, and I do believe the licensee is in the audience tonight.
All right, thank you, Chrissy. Any questions for Chrissy on this one? Seeing none, would the licensee, please step forward? All right.
Hi.
Hi, go ahead and state your name.
Hi, good to see you guys. Well, that day happened is the lady come and asking for modelo. And I said, okay, you can go see the table. And it's go see the table, but I'm busy serving food. When I come back, I say, okay, what is your ID? And it showed me the ID. And like, huh. I think it's not 21, so I give you the ID back and I go to the kitchen and I got my calendar on the back. So when I see the calendar, the officer is coming. So I got that to... No, you give me a beer, I, no, I never give you a beer. Well, you give me the ticket, like, why? I don't give you a beer. I don't care, you give me a ticket. I say, why? And I give you the ticket because more and more is like more angry or something, they're like, okay.
Okay. Did you want a formal hearing, or did you just want to have a, a conversation with the council here?
Is that what?
Do you want a formal hearing? Or, or did you just want to have?
My daughter help me, because my English is like...
We can just have a conversation. It's, it's a matter, it's a matter of guilt or not. So if, if you're, if you're not, if you don't think that you're, you're guilty, you may want to have a, a hearing. You may not. I don't know. It's up, it's your preference.
Okay. Were you asking the question again, and my daughter help me?
Okay. The question is, do you want to have a formal hearing where we give testimony and ask, it'd be just more formal of what we just went through? Or do you want to just go through and have a conversation?
He'll do the hearing.
Do a formal hearing? All right. Um... So you've requested a formal hearing, so at this time I'll open the public hearing. You're welcome to provide testimony, as well as any documents regarding the incident that you'd like to offer. So you did start a dialogue with us. You can repeat the dialogue, and we'll go from there.
He did not bring the paper today.
Okay.
Which paper are you referring to?
Um, dialogue?
Are you referring to the notice? Are you referring to the police report? What are you referring to?
No, 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 that paper, where you send it to me.
We have a copy of that.
Okay.
Yeah. So you gave, you gave testimony that you never served a person. Is that correct?
Yeah, I never served it.
You did, you served them water, and that was it?
Yeah, the glass of water and the menu, because they're like normally customer.
Mm-hmm.
And it's it, it's like I do, uh, I mean, I checked the ID, but the ID is like 20 days to 21, only 20 days. So I go check my calendar, because sometimes it's confused. And, yeah, just like you do, I say, well, like, when I come back, the officer is already with the lady, like, okay.
Okay. Did you have anything else you wanted to add to that testimony?
No.
Okay. Does the council have any questions for him? Go ahead, Tracy.
Did you take her cash for the purchase of the beer?
Yeah.
So you took her cash?
Yeah, I take cash. When I go, uh, send it back, uh, the officer is there already, but I don't take the ticket. So the other officers, you know, you need, I need the ticket, I need the ticket, like, I don't, I don't serve anything.
Did you have a receipt as well for the purchase of a beer?
The lady, yeah, I don't have it.
But you gave her one?
Yeah, because this told me like five times, I need the, the ticket.
Did you give her back all of her cash, or just change?
They said they don't want it. Then, well, the minimum of the beer is like seven something, it's give me only $5.
She gave you $5?
Yeah, and I tried to cash back, but they don't want, say, no, they give me the ticket, but you're not 21, what I, what you think I sell beer for you?
Okay.
But the officer is like, I don't know, it's kind of like angry because I don't give the beer right away. I take minimal, like 10 minutes or more.
John?
So you're, um, you're, you're Family Diner and Cafe, so is your business model where like they prepay for everything before they receive it? So like they come up to a counter, or is it, you, do you actually?
No, no, it's, it's wait when it's done, but this lady is too much and insist like, give the money, give the money, give the money, like, I'm sorry, I'm busy right now. And I think about it, I think it's not 21. Why? Because he's a little confused, because it's only 20 days.
Okay, yeah, but I'm just wondering, you know, your business model is, I mean, like for instance, we were talking about liquor stores, where obviously you bring the beer up to the counter and, you know, and you're checked out at the counter. Your business model is that you, everybody pays for their food and beverage before it's served to them? Is that your business model?
We see them first, and then they eat and they drink all, like everything they order, and then they pay.
Okay, so they pay after. All right. So she, so this individual came into your, your restaurant, right? Ordered a beer, right? And, and you asked for ID, correct? And then, um, I'm trying to understand the whole cash transaction part, but anyways, you went back and checked the ID, but you didn't pour the beer or, or actually, you know, you know, take the cap off the beer or open the can of beer? You didn't do any of that?
No, 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 I don't bring anything. And I don't go to the cooler for the beer. I don't do nothing like that. It's only I bring the glass of water and that's it.
Yeah. And what am I missing here?
I mean, I don't know. We can, we can have some further questions with staff.
Okay.
And with, with our police representative.
All right. That's probably going to happen.
All right. Any other questions for them? All right. Our chief reverend is here as the police representative.
Thank you. If none of you have been to F and M Cafe, I highly recommend it, they have phenomenal food. But in, in any event, sir, were you charged and convicted of the gross misdemeanor sale to a minor?
Yeah, they put him as if he was sold into a minor.
Yep, and he got probation and all that, so he didn't have to pay a fine or anything like that. I will tell you, I do think this is a, um, potential language barrier issue. What we did was correct. I, I do think that he is correct in saying that he did not put a beer in front of her. However, he did take the cash for the beer that was ordered, along with the receipt. But a beer was never actually given to our decoy, physically given to her, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
So I'm, I'm not understanding the cash thing, so the beer was $7?
I have no idea.
Oh, you don't know that?
I don't, I, yeah, I have no idea.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand if there was like cash given back to her, like the difference? Did he give her the difference?
I have no idea.
Does anybody?
Does it say in the report? I'm sorry, I don't have it up here with, yeah.
All right.
I don't know.
We don't know.
Is, as we do these, is our process to, in like a sit-down restaurant, to order the thing and give cash right away? Like, is that part of how we? Because that feels different than how I would normally dine at a restaurant.
Yeah.
And so there's, that may be a confusing thing of like, why are you giving me money right now?
Yep.
Especially if there's a language thing. So I'm curious, like, is that how we execute these?
Yeah, no, I, I think this was, this was interesting. I have a feeling this may have been the first one of the evening that they were doing, and the decoy, maybe this was her first one. And normally, um, the, the beer or liquor is served, right? Now, with that said, right, there was a cash transaction, but there was no actual beer given to her.
Okay. So the transaction wasn't finished?
Correct.
All right. Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead, Tajee.
Can I ask a question to?
Yes, you may.
What do you have in place, or what are your processes to ensure that underage folks do not get served alcohol?
Well, the process was like, you need to have 21 or more, no? Oh, no, you use my calendar.
He uses his, he uses his candler to see what, like, what year she was born in.
Can you, can you try to speak into the microphone?
been, or like how many years it's been, and then... He basically sees like how old she is, and then, or how many days she's left from 21, or how many years, so he doesn't make a mistake.
Yeah, and, um, the other thing is, I have a customer is leaving because they don't have ID. I say, sorry, I can serve alcohol because you don't have ID, and it's leaving. I say, okay, I can help you there, sorry. You want to come back eating? That's it, it's fine.
So do you look at everyone's ID who orders alcohol?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, one, one guy is mostly like, I don't know, maybe 60. Can I, you show me your ID? I say, you think I show you ID? I say, well, I don't want any problem.
Yeah, go ahead, Tracy.
How long have you been in business?
Uh, three years.
Okay.
And alcohol, I have, uh, I think it's almost one year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, John.
So the individual that showed you her ID, the ID is the one that is for an individual who's underage, right? And, and like, I think it's been pointed out here that it says right on there that they're not 21, right?
Mm-hmm.
And so you should be, you shouldn't have to worry about, you know, going back to your calendar and checking to see if they're old enough or not. You should just be saying, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't serve alcohol to you because you're underage, right?
Yeah.
Does that make sense? Because your ID is different.
So they still have to do the math if they don't have, if they didn't get issued their new ID?
No.
They could, they can use the underage ID to be served, because it does have their, their date of birth, and it is a legal ID. Am I correct?
No.
With papers?
With papers.
If, if they have the papers with them, but not just the ID itself.
Right.
Because it's in bold, big letters, under 21. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, so I think the new ones is different. The new ones is, look different than when they don't have 21, the new IDs. Because I look at a lot of IDs, and they say, oh, you're not 21, because you're not looking, they're saying you, they're, you have 21.
Okay. Yeah, we're not going to get into the weeds? The weeds of the IDs. All right. Any other questions for either? Go ahead.
Well, I just have like a comment about, I don't know, but that's the time, a comment about like using IDs or, um, a system for like checking IDs.
Is it, is it a comment you want to make to them?
Yeah.
Yeah, feel free.
Well, I would just say it sounds like u- using the calendar is maybe not the best system. I think there's more efficient systems that you could use, like a person mentioned, they have like a, a thing that says the date all the time, like the, when person's 21. Or other businesses, they have like a machine where they scan the ID, and then that tells them there, too. So I would encourage you to have some kind of system maybe different than the calendar. So like when you're getting busy, that, going to that calendar is going to take you a lot of time out of from other things, and I think you're more likely to make a mistake and have future violations. So that's just my thought on, on your process for checking IDs.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah. One, really quick, do you mind telling me what your daily alcohol sales are?
Uh, for a, $10, $21, like one or two beers, so it's none.
Virtually none.
Yeah, sometimes none, yeah.
Great.
The thing is, because Family Cafe, mostly the customers come in like for breakfast.
Right. Coffee, soda.
Coffee, soda, yeah, for fresh water and coffee, so a lot more than that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, you may have a seat.
All right, thank you.
All right, comments from the council?
Tajee, this is yours, baby.
Hold on, hold on. I guess officially the hearing is closed. We're going into deliberations. Go ahead, Tajee.
I was voluntold, I guess, to start.
You don't have to.
No, I will, I always have something to say. This one's tough. Uh, the, they obviously did not serve alcohol to a minor, so I'm struggling with that reality. If anything, so where I'm at is, as I've said, I will always be in favor, which is always, of the fine, I will have more leniency on the suspension. I am not in favor of a suspension right now personally. I am open to a fine, I'm also open to no fine, um, because of how kind of gray this situation seems and how no alcohol is actually served to a minor.
John?
Just want to comment on, if you're, if you're looking at no fine, you're basically putting that burden on our taxpayers, because this is something that our police force is, is conducting throughout the city. And there's obviously costs in, you know, preparation, there's a process that's involved with this. And so to say that there's no fine in this situation, um, basically, there is a cost to this process. And, and I understand that, you know, I mean, you're, I mean, I asked the question, right? I asked the question about, you know, the sales, but even then, I, there, um, there is precedent here, and you, you should realize that, um, you know, we've been through this before, and we've had some ridiculously low fines in, in cases for establishments that are much more established than this business is. And invariably, that cost is transferred on to the taxpayers themselves. And so I would be very opposed to any type of low or no fine at all, so.
All right. No surprise. Um, anybody else want to make comments, or shall we? Go ahead.
I would definitely be in favor of a, a full violation, but with our police chief saying that it might have been a combination of a language barrier and the decoy's first assignment, it kind of makes me feel, honestly, I would rather, in this case, only forego a fine and do like a three-day suspension.
One day.
Oh, well, right, but I mean, can we not increase that? If we're offsetting, it can only be one?
It's a max.
Oh, it is a max? Okay, then I guess one, one day.
It's one day is rec, is the max, and $750 is the max.
And just to verify, he was not fined on the civil side? It was just?
He was.
You mean the criminal? You were the criminal side?
Yes, he was.
Yeah, I'm going to guess he possibly may have been fined, but if it was his first time, which it was, they usually are given like a probation of some type.
Last chance, seeing none, looking for a motion? I'll make a motion. Um, I move that we, uh, fine at $100 and no suspension. Looking for a second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polls say nay?
Nay.
We have to do roll call?
Yes.
Roll call.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Nay.
Councilmember Anessa Rosen.
Nay.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Nay.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Camish.
Nay.
Motion fails, four to two.
All right, looking for another motion? Tajee?
I make a motion that based on the staff report, including the findings contained therein and the other information presented regarding this matter, that a penalty of seven hundred and fifty dollars be imposed in this case.
All right, looking for a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anessa Rosen.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Nay.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Camish.
Nay.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Nay.
Motion ties. Motion fails.
You're getting better.
Chief, you have a comment?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I want to apologize for putting you in this position, first of all. Councilmember Budishevsky is correct. It does cost us about, uh, we give a decoy about fifty dollars for their volunteer time to, to be our decoy. Um, so they get fifty bucks. And then the staff time, when an officer or two, um, is usually depending on, they either switch their schedules, so it's at straight time, or it's potentially at overtime. I tell you that to say that, um, I think reasonably, right, it's, it's the hundred dollar fine, you know, less than the seven fifty makes sense only because of, and I'm not trying to tell you what to do. I just think that there was a misstep here with us. I think there's a misstep with the owner as well, but I think more so on us. And so I tell you that to say that, um, again, right, if, if they come before you a second time, then that's a huge problem, right? But I do think that we, that we as the police department did a misstep on this one. And Councilmember Budishevsky is looking at me, are you really like being serious? I am. We missed out, so, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
So, just hear me out.
Hold on, hold on. I didn't call you. Tajee, go ahead.
Uh, my, a comment. I, I just struggle with the logic of, well, if we don't find them, then it's our taxpayers having to, to pay this. I mean, it costs us to do this at any, at every, you know, establishment. And so, and, and so it's like as if we were to give a flat fee for, like, we're going to charge everyone a hundred bucks because we're going to, you know, do this, do this thing at your establishment. So I don't, I don't appreciate that logic. I unders, I understand there's a cost, but I'm not trying to just, I am not making the connection here of, okay, we're going to find these people to fund our practice of doing this. I mean, I want to, I think we should be focusing on what actually happened.
Right.
There's obviously gray and stuff didn't go right. And so with all that said, I am open to a lower fine. And if we were to vote for a hundred dollars again, I would probably support that for what it's worth.
Well said. I, I agree with that logic. It's, it does, it escapes me as well. Tracee?
I, because of the misstep and because there was no alcohol actually served, I would make a motion that there is a warning issued with no suspension and no fine.
Looking for a second on that?
I'll second that motion.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Nay.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Camish.
Uh, nay.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Anessa Rosen.
Nay.
Motion, motion tied, motion fails.
I, I would like to make a point. So in the case of this business, the gentleman told me that he might sell two alcoholic beverages per day. So the one-day license suspension is not going to affect his business, you know, at all. And so it should, if anything, that should be included in, you know, in whatever motion we put forward. Seven hundred and fifty dollars, um, is our penalty and, um...
It's discretionary.
It is discretionary.
Well, then don't state it like it's our penalty.
I, I know, but it is discretionary. But I think any type of penalty that's just cash only without a, a license suspension is, again, I think is, we're getting ourselves onto the slippery slope, so.
Okay. Thank you for that. I make a motion, uh, make a penalty of one hundred dollars, no license suspension. Looking for a second? David?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Councilmember Bud, excuse me. Councilmember Budishevsky.
Nay.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Camish.
Uh, nay.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Nay.
Councilmember Anessa Rosen.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Motion ties, motion fails.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion and I'm, the only hangup that I have is that he, uh, the, the license plate, or the driver's license was, and it said, under twenty-one. So that's the hangup for me. So with that said, um, I'll make a motion for...
It wasn't served.
No, but money was taken and a receipt was printed. With that, I will make a motion of a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars and a suspension for one day.
Looking for a second, Tajee?
I'll second that.
Great. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Uh, Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Camish.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Nay.
Councilmember Anessa Rosen.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Nay.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Motion tie, or, excuse me, motion passes, four to two.
Okay.
Do we have enough film in the camera? It is.
All right. Next, the council will consider civil penalties for a violation of liquor license regulations by Milton's Cafe. Our city clerk, Chrissy, will address the council.
Thank you again. Milton's Cafe at thirty-five forty-five Douglas Drive also did not pass the compliance check. The employee of the business has pleaded guilty in court to the offense, notice of the violation, and tonight's meeting was sent to the licensee on April twenty-sixth. This is considered a first violation for this licensee. Staff is recommending a seven hundred and fifty dollar fine and one-day license suspension. And I do believe the, um, business owners are in the audience tonight.
Yes, thank you. All right, any questions for Chrissy? Seeing none. Could the licensee step forward? Hello, please state your name.
Francine Weber.
Phil Weber.
Hi, um, so same question is, are you interested in a formal hearing? Or would you like to waive the, the hearing and just have a?
We waive it.
All right, so, uh, questions for, from the council, for them. Any questions? Did you want to make any statements?
Uh, yes. Uh, we're in our twelfth year. I think we've done pretty good. I'm in agreement that, I'm sure it's not been the only time that a minor has been served, you know, what are the odds, right? We, I take pride in being transparent and being a real, you know, realistic in running my business for people who know me. And I take responsibility for what has happened in my space. The server is no longer with us. Uh, he actually works a seasonal job. I'm sure that he did not get the training that he needed when he was hired. We run short-staffed and some things just kind of get missed. We have adopted like what I like to call the Byerly's way of getting a, you know, checking ID, no matter what your age is. You know, that's all I have to say. I'm sorry that it happened and it's our responsibility with our employees to make sure that they do what they need to do. And like I said, we've been open, I think we're in our twelfth year, so not too bad.
Yeah, I agree.
Also, I'd just like to say too is that, um, we also have another restaurant. And, um, we do, because our insurance, the Dram Shop Insurance, we offer alcohol awareness training to all our own staff and Milton's staff. Post-COVID, we missed a year. It was just one of those unfortunate things. It was just a crazy time in everybody's life. Not an excuse at all. I mean, this is something, I mean, we stand behind the mistake we made and it's, it's, and that's what it is. But it's, it, it's just real hard after I've been doing this for fifty years. And, um, Milton's is a, is a stellar place in the community. Community-oriented, community-minded. Our other restaurant is just a way in St. Louis Park. So we would never knowingly set out to serve a minor. We would knowingly, not for a dollar, serve somebody just to get the dollar. Not worth it to us. It's, it's offensive to you and we take the license very seriously. So I just, and I'm speaking for most people in the industry. They take it very seriously. They put their heart and their soul in their business and it's, uh, you know, it's our life, so. And I'm, and, and again, I'm not making them, I don't even want consideration of listening to fine or anything. We did it and it's, it's, it's over and done. But we will be as diligent as we can training all our staff to make sure they check all the IDs.
Okay, go ahead, Tracee.
I was just wondering if you could explain, you said it's the Byerly's way. What is that?
Everybody gets ID, no matter what your age is. Yeah, it doesn't matter, yeah.
Who trains your employees when they're hired?
Well, my daughter normally does, yeah. She's been in the business.
Is that who trained this individual?
I honestly couldn't say during that time period. It's just been in disarray, you know, since, just with staff and the way people are being brought on. And I, um, in fact, I just hired four people last week. A bartender and, you know, some more mature people who've been in the business. We tend to hire people who haven't been in the business, so they don't come with the experience. And so, um, you know, I don't regret it, but, you know, hiring the youngins, but, you know, they don't come with the experience, so.
And liquor sales at Milton's is probably about eighteen percent of the business, so it's, it's not a huge piece of the business. And, and I assume too, when you have the license suspension, we're talking beverage only at licensee. So, um, yeah, it's not a big, it's not a huge piece of the business, but it's an important one, but it's not a huge.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you for stepping forward.
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion? Any other questions from staff? Seeing none? Looking for a motion?
I can make that motion.
Go ahead.
Make a motion that based on the staff report, including the findings contained therein and the other information presented regarding this matter, that a penalty of seven hundred and fifty dollars and a one-day license suspension be imposed in this case.
All right, looking for a second? Tracee?
I'll second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Roll call.
Councilmember Camish.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Anessa Rosen.
Nay.
Mayor Adams.
Nay.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings.
Nay.
Motion ties, motion fails.
All right, I make a motion to, uh, have a penalty of seven hundred and fifty day, or seventy, hundred and fifty dollars, uh, no suspension. Looking for a second? Tajee?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Roll call.
Councilmember Camish.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Anessa Rosen.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Nay.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, that's final. So, um, just to be clear, thank you very much for your business in Crystal. We love you guys here. All right. Yeah. Yeah, I get it. Very nice. All right. Next, the council will consider civil penalties for a violation of liquor license regulations by Northern Tier Retail DBA Speedway, uh, located at seventy-eight eighteen thirty-sixth Avenue North. Chrissy, you want to address the council?
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. Um, Speedway Store forty-one eighty-seven, located at seventy-eight eighteen thirty-sixth Avenue North, also did not pass the compliance check. The employee of the business has pleaded guilty in court to the offense, notice of the violation, and tonight's meeting was sent to the licensee on April twenty-sixth. This is considered a first violation for this licensee. Uh, staff recommends a seven hundred and fifty dollar fine and one-day license suspension. And there are representatives on behalf of Speedway in the audience tonight.
All right, thank you. Questions for Chrissy on this one? Have they ever had a violation?
No.
Never? And that would be, that would be, go back to the name change, right? I mean, it doesn't go back to the history of the building and, like, it doesn't go back to like Super America, right?
Uh, this, um, owner licensee, yes. This is their first violation. They have been Northern Tier Retail LLC, um, for many years, to my knowledge.
And that's beyond being a Speedway?
Yeah, they're, yes, they're DBA, yes. And the change of their DBS, sorry.
Wow, so that's a long time. All right.
It's like there, maybe we need clarity on that?
That's not true. No? So, sorry.
Let's, let's get some clarification.
It's my, it's my understanding that Speedway bought out Super America.
Yes.
It's a, it's a different company.
Correct. But the licenses remained with the same person, is that correct?
No, same, same, yeah, same person, but different company.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that...
So you responded to the person, not to the company. Is that correct?
I'm responding to the Northern Retail, or Northern Tier Retail LLC, yes.
No, I mean, I don't need to be in bed till ten-thirty. All right, any other questions? Seeing none, would the licensee please step forward? Or their rep, representation?
Hello, my name is David Dushenko and I'm from Lavender, Gillan and Miller. And I represent Northern Tier Retail LLC that does business as Speedway. I have two Speedway representatives with me, Jesse Cindonitos, the market leader, and Imran Jeffre, the area leader. Want to let you know that Speedway takes these violations very seriously. After Speedway became aware of this violation, a particular employee was terminated. And that's based on company policy. Company policy also has numerous other restrictions. Number one, you can't sell to people under the age of twenty-one. All employees must go through training. All employees must certify that they've gone through training. They have to take refresher courses every year. And the store leaders must ensure that all the employees have completed their training. On top of that, if there is a sale to a minor, as happened in this case, there is mandatory termination under the policy. And just as it happened here, the employee cannot be rehired for one year. If they want to be rehired, you need to have the market leader, the area leader, and/or the vice president approve in writing to the HR department that they can rehire that individual. But again, that person has to wait one year before rehire. In addition, Speedway contracts with companies to do mystery shoppers. So unlike the governmental version, it's a similar version, but hired by a, a third party. And that third party comes in and does mystery shops on all of the stores to see how they pass. And in the past two years, so we did a two-year search for, so it'd be May twenty, twenty-two to May twenty-twenty-four, there were six mystery shoppers through a third-party company that came into the store and passed all six of the times. So they take it very, very seriously. After this happened, the manual override button at the register was disabled at the store. So what happened in this particular incident, the person came in, they wanted to buy alcohol, they gave the identification, the identification was scanned, on the scanner it said, "Not valid." The employee then did a manual override over that and attested that this person's old enough, sold it. And then, of course, it was a fine, you know, the violation. So the store, in this particular case, they removed that button, which means every single sale of every single alcoholic beverage has to go through their system. And if it doesn't go through their system, you can't do a sale. So if you have a person who has an ID for maybe different... So if you have a person who has an ID from maybe a different jurisdiction, they might be 60 years old, but if for a reason the system doesn't pick it up, you can't have a sale because the system won't allow you to have a sale. So the person has to go to a different store. They can't go to that Speedway. Just recently, Speedway also disabled the manual override button at the other Speedway store that's in town. Because they don't want to shift people to the other Speedway store. So both Speedway stores have a manual, the manual override is removed. So if anyone wants to buy alcohol there, no matter your age, you have to have your ID and it has to go through the system. This is our first violation. And Speedway asked that we would have no license suspension, suspension and then pay the $750 fine. If you have questions, I'm here and representatives are here as well.
All right, any questions for David? Go ahead.
I just have a question. So other businesses, when I've bought alcohol in this city, you just show the back of your license and they scan it and they don't ever verify that you're who's on that license. What is the policy for Speedway in that situation? Do you actually look at the front too to verify?
Yes, they have to verify the photo and that, well, the computer will also tell them if it's expired as well.
Okay.
You have to verify that that's the individual on the license.
All right, if you're going to speak, please come up to the microphone. That way we can hear you better, plus people at home can hear you. Could you repeat that, please?
Yes, so they are required to verify the photo, that it is the individual that is purchasing the product. And they also have to check for expiration, but the software program will not allow the sale to go through if it is expired or under 21.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I just have a comment. So this individual, you know, obviously overrode this particular sale and it sounds like they had pretty good knowledge how to, how to do it. And so again, it goes back to my comment of them enabling underage sales to happen at your location, even though you have the mystery shoppers, even though you have the so-called void going on. I mean, to me, it, it looks, with our compliance checks, we have, it shows us that there's been a lot of illegal sales that have been happening at this location. And so, great, we, you know, I, I understand your point for like, you know, you've made changes going forward. But I do think that you need to be responsible for what has happened in the past. And I, and to the council, I would say that we give a $750 fine and a one day suspension in this case, so.
Thank you. You may sit down. I'd like to make a motion that we impose a penalty based on the findings of $750 with no suspension. Looking for a second on that. Tajee?
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay?
Nay.
Motion, well, let's do roll call.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember Onessa Rosen?
Aye.
Mayor Adams?
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky?
Nay.
Councilmember Cummings?
Aye.
Councilmember Kamish?
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 1.
All right, thank you. Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it. All right. Next, the council will consider civil penalties for same violation we've been talking about all night for VFW post 494. Our city clerk again will address the council on this issue.
Thank you again, mayor and council. Lastly, the VFW located at 522256th Avenue North did not pass the alcohol compliance check. The employee of the business has pleaded guilty in court to the offense. Notice of the violation in tonight's meeting was sent to the licensee on April 26th. This is considered a first violation for this licensee. Staff is recommending a $750 fine and a one day license suspension. And representatives of the VFW are here in attendance tonight.
All right, thank you, Chrissy. Any questions on this one for staff, for Chrissy? Seeing none, we will move to the licensee. Step forward, please. I'd please state your name.
Gene Burdick.
Gene Burdick, all right. Did you wish to have a formal hearing or did you?
No.
No, okay.
Our employee has already been in court and paid her fine.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the city council for Gene? Go ahead.
I know that you guys go through the training here with the city, correct?
We, we have a training at least once a year with the police. They come in and hold alcohol awareness and tobacco training for all of our employees who aren't working. And then we ask them to come back and catch up on, with those employees. But we tell, we pass it around the community that they can show up there when we hold the training. And we've told the police officers that if they wish to hold another training on their own, they can just get ahold of us and use our place.
And then what other safeguards do you have in place too?
We have that clock up right by the bar that shows what date you can serve to a person.
Okay.
She, she knows instantly that she did wrong. I mean, I'm, I'm not here to make excuses for her. She, she's been there 15 years, she's very good. She knows she made a mistake. Just, it was the end of her shift, very busy. And normally she checks all the IDs and I didn't realize all the little checkpoints on IDs that there are until I went to this class. And they, they always ask for IDs. And if the ID doesn't look right, they won't serve the person. That's all, that's all I have to say. We do a lot for the community as well.
True.
We try to. I'm not, and I'm not making excuses for what happened. It happened and we, we have talks with our employees all the time about that.
And not to beat a dead horse, but I'm, we're asking you to partner with us to make sure that underage individuals do not receive.
Yep, that's our goal.
Yeah. So, I mean, it was a culture issue. I mean, that, that needs to change, so.
Yes.
All right, any other questions, comments? Go ahead.
So this employee, Julie, she's still an employee?
Yes.
Is there, does she have any sort of, any sort of disciplinary action against her from you guys?
No.
Okay.
No, she's been there 15 years, we've had, never had a problem before.
All right, any other questions? This was, the question I asked was what day was, was this done on? Thank you, you may sit down.
Oh, was it not February? It was a Saturday last year.
Saturday, middle of the afternoon, maybe? All right, any discussion? Seeing none, looking for a motion? Tajee?
Make a motion that based on the staff report, including the findings contained therein and the other information presented regarding this matter, that a penalty of $750 be imposed in this case.
For a second? David?
I'll, I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polls say nay?
Nay.
Roll call, please.
Oops, excuse me. Councilmember Onessa Rosen?
Aye.
Mayor Adams?
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky?
Nay.
Councilmember Cummings?
Aye.
Councilmember Kamish?
Nay.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. And I too want to thank the VFW for their partnership in the community. I am very aware of what you do in our community. Thank you so much. We value you in our community and plus all the extra stuff that happens with you guys. Thank you. All right. Next, the council will consider a resolution awarding a contract for construction of hard surfaces, courts in Valley Place Park and parking lot in North Lions Park. Our recreation director just passed out the slides for us. Thank you, John. Welcome.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. We're here with paper copies of a presentation. But we moved this week to North Lions Park and Valley Place Park. And at, at Valley Place Park, we have, we'll be replacing the three tennis courts, moving the basketball court adjacent to the tennis courts, new fencing around all courts and new trail connections. And we went out for bid for this. There is lighting involved as well, and that is actually item 7.8. So the bid item is one item and the lighting is a second item. Going to North Lions Park, we do have expanding and improving the west parking lot and new trail connections at that park. And then additional work, this was not part of the bid, was removing the parking lot, removing the existing volleyball tennis courts and then putting some new volleyball stands in that hockey rink. So the bid items were for what's indicated there. We were here on March 19th seeking approval of going out for bid. Advertisements were placed on March 28th and April 4th with bids being open on April 18th. And we're here tonight for approval of the bid agreement. The plan here, once all the paperwork is done, is they will start probably mid-June and then be done by October. The goal when we're doing tennis courts is that the paint needs to be put on before it gets cold. So that's usually a September thing. And the pavement has to cure for 30 days before you paint it. So the paving needs to be done in August sometime, so we kind of backtrack that. But then there's some restoration of things that will happen and that could go into October. On the next slide, you can see the, the bid results. Batuminous Roadways came in with a low bid, which was significantly lower than our engineer's estimate. So we're pleased with that. And so that, so yeah, so that's for item 7.7, that's those bid items. Then the next slide is the court lighting. And we can purchase the lights through Musco Sports Lighting. We have the Musco system in Crystal, so Brad and some other staff can control the lights from their phone. So if there's a, a group using it and somehow it gets missed to have them on, they can control them. So it's a citywide system of lighting, so we use that Musco system. And that can be, like I say, purchased through Sourcewell. Kilmer Electric is a local company and they are one of the preferred installers of the Musco system. Because it's a little different way of installing them. Typically, when you do like light poles in parking lots, you, you do the tube and you pour the concrete in it. The Musco system, the pole comes with the base all attached and so they, they put it all in one piece and it's a little bit different process. So Kilmer has done all of our recent lighting for sports lighting. So the two items then, if we look at combined 7.7 and 7.8, the budget for the two projects is $890,000. And one project's in the buildings fund and one is in the parks fund. And this includes the design and bid process. So we had WSB preparing the plans and that, we were here in December for that. The court and parking lot construction, which is 7.7, is $429,363.65. Court lighting, which is agenda item 7.8, is the $105,300. So the total of all of that is 601. So budget 890, and then the actual cost then is 601,927.65. So under budget. So the recommendation tonight is to enter into contracts, just take them one at a time, I guess, 7.7. Enter into agreement with Batuminous Roadways in the amount of $429,363.65 for improvements to the hard surface courts in Valley Place Park and the west parking lot in North Lions Park.
All right, thank you. Questions? Any questions?
It looks to me from where, oh, thank you. It looks to me from where the basketball court is going to be moved to, that often is underwater and there's water there now and.
Yeah, so the basketball court will be, just like we have at Becker Park where it's basketball and then the three, or at Becker, it's the eight pickleball courts will be all put into one area. So instead of being a separate.
There's one fence around the whole thing?
Correct.
Okay.
So it'll be just, when we did the master plan back in 2017, a call for the basketball court to be moved on the other side of the tennis courts. And shortly after we did that plan, we talked to some of the neighbors over there and they really were not pleased with that idea. So this is kind of a compromise, moving it away from the playground where we've, we heard a lot of people don't like having basketball right next to playgrounds. And so it moves away from the playground, but then also keeps it on, that's the playground side of the play, of the tennis courts.
Okay, thank you.
Tajee? When are we doing the parking lot at Valley Place?
We are not doing the parking lot at Valley Place. The parking lot's at North Lions.
I know, I'm just asking.
Oh.
Aren't we going to do that this year?
So we were going to do the one by the playground and there, we're doing some street reconstruction and so some of the parking lot is used for that, to store materials. So we just delayed that.
To next year?
I think next year, we're going to go on top of the hill.
Okay.
And then do that one and then the following year come back.
Okay, so it'll be a while. I'm just curious, and then also curious, as a former tennis player, have we considered putting like a wall on the fence for kind of an individual to hit against once the new fence and courts are up?
We, I, you know, I know that was talked about at one point, but then it was not included. So I don't recall exactly. Because there's not the extra space to add something like that. A lot of times those are, you have a little bit of extra room and you, you put that off to the side. But that, and that, you know, we're putting up a fence, so at some point, if that's a desire, we could look into that.
Okay, thank you. So as a pickleball player, I'm wondering if you'd ever switch games?
It would be no.
I can do both, I mean.
Same time?
Tennis players are great on the pickleball court. It transfers quite well. All right, go ahead.
Just a couple of comments. The North Lions Park, I feel like that parking lot has been in rough shape for a while, so that'll be good to get that fixed. And I'm just intrigued about the summer volleyball because I know like boys volleyball's a thing, so it'll be interesting to see how much use that gets in. It's good, good use for a summer, or for an ice rink.
Yeah, so there's a lot of volleyball on the hard surface there and we talked to the guys that play there and they, do you like sand or do you like the hard surface? And they like the hard surface. So, but the tennis courts there are really in bad shape. So kind of getting that out of the picture is kind of, is part of this plan and then doing something better in the hockey rink.
Got it.
All right, any further questions? Yeah, go ahead, Tajee. The summer volleyball inside the hockey rink, does that just include lines or are you going to, are there poles that are going to be up or what will that look like?
Yeah, so if you look, I think way back, at least maybe when I was a kid, you had the, you know, the tires with the concrete and the pole. It'd be a nicer version of that with more concrete. Then we'll move in with heavy equipment and, and place them and then, yeah, there'll be lines on the, on the concrete as well for that.
Got it. Cool. Okay, that's it. You left yourself that wide open and everybody passed? Well, lucky night. Any other questions? All right, looking for a motion? Tracy?
I will make a motion to adopt the resolution to award of contract for hard surface court improvements in Valley Park Place, Valley Place Park and west parking lot improvements in North Lions Park.
All right, looking for a second? Teresa?
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay?
We agree on something, wow.
I, I appreciate the no roll call.
Yeah, you and I both.
Yeah, and the second part of that is 7.8.
And you've done all your talking on that one, right?
Correct.
All right, any questions on that one? Seeing none, Tracy?
I will make a motion to adopt a resolution to approve the purchase and installation of a lighting system for the hard surface courts in Valley Place Park.
All right, for a second? Go ahead, Teresa.
I will second that.
All members in favor, please say aye.
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 Polls say nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So we do have a couple of announcements. To accommodate Crystal residents participating on No Mo May, the city waits until June 1st to begin long grass enforcement. The city council will hold a work session on Thursday, May 9 at 6:30 in Conference Room A at City Hall. It's also available via Zoom. Friends of the Crystal Park plant sale is Saturday, May 18 from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. That's at Becker Park. And the next council meeting is Tuesday, May 21, 7:00 PM here at Council Chambers at City Hall. And it's also available via Zoom. Council meetings and work sessions are available for listening and viewing at crystal.com.gov, dot gov, excuse me. Any other announcements?
Yes, I had just two quick things to say. First, I will let the council give Forrest a hard time for not being here tonight, which created the even number of votes. He was originally planning on attending remotely, so we set that up, which would require the roll call votes, but he had a conflict that came up when he's traveling. The second thing, I had the, the honor, the privilege yesterday to go down to Rochester to attend the
Yes.
Minnesota Association of Women Police War Ceremony. And our chief revering received the leadership award for 2023 of the whole state. So I just want to commend her on that and recognize her.
Can I ask one question, Chief?
Yeah.
Do you get like a big belt?
I should, right?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Right.
Champion, right?
Yeah, I should.
In the tiara?
Tiara. I would like a tiara. Thank you, I appreciate it. If you don't mind, Mayor, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about Police Week just really quick, two seconds. Thank you for the proclamation.
You're welcome.
As you know, normally Deputy Chief Brian Hubbard is here with me during council meetings. And tonight, the reason he wasn't here is because a Burnsville captain who retired three weeks prior to their shootings down there passed away in his sleep. And so Brian, being the president of Lima, the Law Enforcement Memorial Association, was dealing with that and the family. And I bring that up because as you know, we lost two police officers and a paramedic firefighter not that long ago. And it's been the, unfortunately, the, the largest amount of criminal assaults on law enforcement in the last two years. And so I say that only because I am very grateful that that has not happened here in Crystal and hopefully never will. But to commend you for honoring Police Week, and that's why it truly matters that we do. So thank you for doing that. And to honor Deputy Chief Hubbard for his work and what he does every day with Lima, so that's it.
Thank you. Well, we want to thank you. We have, we've seriously seen some extremely good leadership through your whole command staff. We, we thank you for yours. Obviously, this is well deserved, in my opinion. I think every, I think I speak for everyone on the council. So thank you for your dedication, thank you for your service, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Aren't you supposed to shake her hand?
All right, with that, I move for adjournment.
So moved?
Second? No, I moved for adjournment.
You asked for a move.
No, I moved. Are you going to second? Anybody else want to second?
I will second that.
All right, thanks, Teresa. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay? Motion carries.
No respect.